We'll call meeting to order. Shelley can do roll call, please. Thank you, Shelley. Fernando can release the invocation, please. We'll start with summary of current events. Mike, we'll start with you down there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Events of the week. Last week, we went to, several of us attended League of Cities and Towns Conference of four day, four or three days, four day conference, three days, down in the valley. A lot of positive information from a lot of resources. Just a really, I thought it was one of the better ones that we've attended conferences. There was a lot of good information. And then I'd like to comment on the Yuma Street Staircase. I got a chance to go look at it the other day, and man, that's an excellent job by the person who did the mosaic of the quail. Really neat, really neat. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse? Mariano?
Mr. Mayor, there's a new document put out by Gila County Health Department and recently approved by the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to point that out to the public. You should go to GilaCountyAZ.gov, GilaCountyAZ.gov. The county has finished with the Health Department, a Community Health Improvement Plan, which addresses three or four critical needs defined for the entire county, and they're beginning to address it. And I really encourage the public to go to GilaCountyAZ.gov and read that document, because the City of Globe participated in a series of meetings and health information gathering. Many subjects were covered, but drug abuse, suicide prevention, and other serious subjects are finally put together in a plan of action, this Community Health Improvement Plan, for the county to proceed into the future. And I know that the various entities around the county will be supporting efforts on that. So, very useful document, very important document. I've had some constituency who are interested in those subjects, and I really invite you to take the time to read that document. It's at the county website, YumaCountyAZ.gov, and you can do a search for it. If you're looking for the chip, the Community Health Improvement Plan. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mariano. Fernando?
Just a couple of things. Today, I got to go to Ramona Barrera's funeral, and she was just a great person. She was a schoolteacher, retired from the Miami School District. Her husband is also a schoolteacher. He started a scholarship fund in his name, and she helped many young people go to college and become teachers. And so, I just want to respect her and all the effort that she made for our community. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Fernando. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the Leagues and Cities Conference that just about all of us here attended. I think everybody here did attend. You know, there was some really good guest speakers, professionals at certain areas of expertise, and all of us had opportunities to go to these presentations throughout the three-day conference, learn some really good information, some things that are coming down the road, you know, as far as, I went to one that was, had to deal with electric cars, and what the government and the state and how they're going to allocate money to build these billing stations, you know, and the money that's coming in. So, it looks like it's going to be a big wave of an effort for something like that in that aspect as far as non-fossil fuel vehicles. There was other presentations, but I think all of us took something away from those, something that's really valuable that we can bring to our hometown. And along with that, we mingle with other council members, other mayors, other city managers, even at the state level. So, it's a great opportunity for the local councils, mayors and councils and staff to learn what other communities are doing, and to learn about the issues that they're dealing with, and the challenges they're dealing with, and how they're coping with them. So, I just can't say enough about the conference. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. I have a few things. On the 21st, the Citizens Academy begins. It's a seven-week course, and anybody interested in signing up for this course, please contact our clerk, Shelley Salazar. They still have openings, and they have openings for non-citizens also. So, there is special applications for people that not live in the city that can attend the Citizens Academy and learn more about our city government, and our staffing, and our different departments. On the 29th, on Thursday, 29th, I invite everybody, I will be giving the State of the City address. It'll be at 5:30, and it'll be here at Veterans Park, here in the front. So, please come and listen to what has been going on for the last year, and where we look at in the future. The thing for this year is our city, our time. On the 7th is First Friday, and it's also Globe Homecoming, and those events continue to get bigger and bigger every Friday. So, come out and enjoy this event that the city puts on. On the 28th, September 28th, October 1st, is Old Dominion Days, three-day event, and the Historic Society do an amazing job to put this program on. So, come out. There's a list out there, and you can pre-buy a lot of the tickets, or that day you can also do it. So, please come out and enjoy Old Dominion Days from the 28th through the 1st. Tomorrow begins the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee Seminar. A couple of council members are going. I know Jerry Engineer's going. I don't know who else will be attending that. That'll be in Maricopa, but it'll be a good chance to mingle with legislators and other members on rural transportation. I know our biggest push this year for us is the Jess Hayes Sidewalk Project. That's a partnership between the City of Globe and the county. So, we're hoping to make some good progress on that tomorrow, or this week. And then one last thing, I do want to introduce Rita Phi, and she's the new manager of Cal Ranch, and she will be, I have a call card for her during Call to the Public. She'll give us a little update about herself. So, welcome to our community, though. And that's it. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, thank you very much. Though we're very excited about the Rural Policy Forum, it does give us a chance to have access to rural legislators and worry about projects outside of Maricopa County and Pima County. There's a lot of money out there, and we need to join together to fight for that and make sure we get it here in the City of Globe and in the Southern Gila Region. And so, I know that Jerry Barnes, City Engineer, is going, and Rick Powers, our consultant, they're gunned up and ready to go. And so, I know council will be down there, too. I will not be attending. The second thing, we did attend, along with you, with the majority of the council members here, the League of Cities in Glendale, and call attention, I did not attend the presentation, but I know Shelley did, where we talked about the Gorman USA Project, and we were the talk of the town, because we had a 60-day legislative process. And so, getting from start to finish to getting what they needed took 60 days. The two big issues are housing and water, and many people believe that housing, the city's legislative process take from 12 to 18 months, some 24 months. I don't believe they're all that long, but we got kudos for our ability to get the meetings lined up and the process done, and be respectful of the time of the developers, which is something that everyone is saying is a key piece to getting housing in any city, is that is reducing that legislative burden, which we do here in Globe. Want to make a comment on that. The last thing is, you know, we're surviving another monsoon season. It's a lot of extra work on our city staff, every night, every weekend, the sandbags, getting out there, doing the cleanup. Every time it rains, it washes dirt and debris onto the streets and into the yards. And so, you know, we're still not fully staffed in Public Works. If they know anybody that would love to have a starting career in Public Works and city government, come see us, our postings on the website. But we're responding as quickly as we can to make sure that we do the cleanup after every rain, even if it's nights and weekends. And kudos to Public Works and the work that John and his crews do. So, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, that's all I have for you.
Thank you. We'll go to first Community Call to the Public, and this is a time where anybody from the public would like to make any comments to the council. It is limited to three minutes. Council cannot respond to any of the comments made by the public, although we can direct staff for further follow-up on any matters. I do have a couple of call requests to speak. I have a first one, Richard Armijo. If you're going to come up to the mic and state your name and address, Richard.
My name is Richard Armijo. My address is 699 North Colchee Street, Globe, Arizona. The reason I'm here for is, we haven't had our road paved in 25 years, and I used to let it go, and hoping that somebody will pave it, but it doesn't seem like it's getting paved, and it's been passed over. And where I see many people here in Globe, they get their roads paved maybe every three to four years. And I feel this is way too long to go 25 years without getting a road paved. I come here to the council, and to my councilman, Jesse, asking with courtesy and trying to do the right thing. I don't know what other words to use, but to come here and try to do the right thing.
And Mr. Mayor, Members Council, as you stated, Mayor, we cannot respond, but I believe that we're in communication with the gentleman, and I will be sending out a list of the streets and the areas, some history on what has been paved, not paved, but treated. We do different types of chip seals. Paving is very rare, but the treatments on the asphalt that we can rescue, we do that. So, I'll send some information to all Members Council, what the current schedule is.
We appreciate that.
And then I believe staff will follow up with you, or have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next, Rita Phi, if you want to come up?
Hi, I'm Rita Phi. I'm the GM for the new Cal Ranch that's coming into Globe. We're very excited about it. I don't have an address yet, but I'll have one soon. We are scheduled to open sometime around late October to mid-November for sure, before Black Friday. We should be bringing between 30 and 40 jobs to Globe, and, you know, be varying from hourly to salary positions within our store. We're very excited to be here. I, in particular, am very excited to be here. I plan to involve myself. I said I've raised five children. Now, my new child is Globe. So, I'll be buying a house, planting my roots, and being very involved in the community. I've already partnered with the Chamber. Will be, you know, reach out to me if there's something, you know, something you'd like me to be at, anything that you need assistance with, I'm here for it. So, we're really excited to be here. Okay, I should be here physically by October 1st. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Don't forget about our Citizens Academy. You might want to do that. Next, we have special presentations and ceremonial matters. I have a presentation of the Mayor's Proclamation proclaiming September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'll read that proclamation. Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclamation, whereas the month of September 2022 is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and whereas Arizona ranks 20th in the nation for death by suicide, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in Arizona, and whereas approximately 1,300 Arizonans died by suicide in 2020, and whereas suicide is the leading cause of death for Arizonans ages 10 to 34, and whereas on an average, one person in Arizona dies by suicide every six and a half hours. Whereas several organizations, including Arizona Health Care Cost Containment System, Arizona Department of Health Services, community organization, universities, and other stakeholders will work to educate Arizona citizens about available suicide prevention support services for teens and adults. Now, therefore, I, Globe Mayor Alguameros, by the authority vested in me on behalf of the Globe City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Globe, and urge all citizens to join together as a community to learn to recognize the warning sign, and how to respond if they suspect someone may be depressed, threatening suicide, or may be suicidal. So, we'll go to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council or their staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, consideration of waiver of Section 2-4-10A prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. One, accounts payable $662,635.82. Two, consideration of approval of council minutes, August 23rd, 2022 meeting minutes. B, consideration to approve Cecil Anthony Hernandez for the Planning and Zoning Commission. C, consideration of the Historic Advisory Preservation Commission's recommendation of approval of request to replace the upper-level windows and the exterior improvements of the building located at 201 North Broad Street. D, consideration of a letter of support to the Globe Miami Regional Chamber, calling for supporting a grant application for T-Mobile Hometown Grant. Do we have anybody from the public, the staff, or council that would like to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I would ask that we remove item B, since the applicant or the person applying for the planning and zoning is here in the audience?
Did you say B or D?
B. Recognize that person.
Mr. Mayor, if there are any other comments or questions, I motion that we remove item B for further discussion and accept the remainder of the consent agenda as read.
We have motion and second for approval of consent counter minus item B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposing, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. So, item B is consideration to approve Cecil Anthony Hernandez for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you...
And I just, Cecil, where are you? Okay. I make sure I have the right person here. So, well, did you have anything that you'd like to say on behalf, or? I think not, but I wanted council to know who they were recommending, and we're excited for you. Jump up there. Now, you said more than three words. You got to come up. So, you can be on the Zoom.
I was part of the second council Citizens Academy, and I turned in an application for the Library Committee, and I couldn't, it didn't work out. They had said that there was an opening for that, so I turned it in, and yeah, I didn't even remember. And then Shelley called me, and I'm excited. I don't know exactly, but I know that I can learn a lot from Dana, and I'm hoping that I can contribute somehow. So, we'll see what happens. Thank you, guys.
Freddie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Cecil. I remember you in one of the Citizens Academies. I think we dialogued a little bit. You had some questions. But this is just the telling proof of the benefit of the Citizens Academy, and how our citizens can learn about the city and city government, and then become a part of it. It's just truly inspiring. And I don't know if this is the first that we have had. Have we had several? Well, then I think we, you know, I think we need to highlight every one of them that is wanting and able and willing to join the city in any capacity that they can to help us move it forward. So, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Cecil. Motion second for approval of item B. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposing, nay. Any abstaining? Motion passed. New business. We have discussion and consideration of the planning and zoning recommendation of case number G22-01, a request for a 17 and a half foot tall monument sign in excess of the 16-foot maximum height limitation, pursuant to zoning code 14-13-20J3B, located at 1100 North Broad Street, assessor parcel number 207-15-077A, and it's the former Napa Auto Building. So, we have Dana on the line. Dana, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council members, I appreciate you considering this item this evening. As Mayor just introduced, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this last week, and unanimously recommend approval. So, with that, take you through a quick presentation. Share my screen. And move on to your discussion. Everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Very good. So, this is a really unique and interesting part of our code, our sign code. It basically requires monument signs to have a maximum of a 16-foot height limitation, unless approved by city council. Just to give you a heads up, there's another portion of the sign code for wall-mounted signs. So, monument sign is that freestanding sign you'll see out by the right-of-way that really capture your vehicle traffic, for the most part. Well, wall signs are the signs that are on the actual building facade, usually up in front of the, or over the top of the main entry. So, just to give you a heads up, there's also a provision in that code that says wall signs have a maximum of 100 square feet, unless approved by city council. So, those are two unique little areas. These aren't conditional use permits or anything like that. It's just a discretionary approval. But we do like to give you some criteria or discuss some criteria that would effectively warrant or necessitate. Uh but we do like to give you some criteria or discuss some criteria that would effectively warrant or necessitate uh con- exceptional consideration to allow these greater heights or areas. So for the purpose of tonight's uh discussion, strictly for height. Uh the applicant is proposing to remove the uh two existing pole mounted signs along that frontage of the old Napa Building. And you can see it right here on the uh site plan aerial on the bottom right corner uh with the parcel highlighted in green. But it is one of our larger commercial uh multi-tenant complexes in in the city, particularly in near this, near our older area or the historic downtown, uh which this is just north of. So um obviously between this building as well as the uh auto dealerships, now U-Haul, a portion being U-Haul. Um you know, those are our larger, most prominent, I think, uh business uh facades along along that corridor. And both of those happen to be recently purchased and being renovated. So we're we're very excited for the improvements uh that come along with with uh this, the purchasing of these buildings. So. That said, like I mentioned, they're going to remove those two signs you see on that image. And they're going to replace that closer Napa sign, but back a little bit further. I'll show you a site plan in a second with this um freestanding monument. I mean, multi-tenant sign, if you will. Uh they have, they've named that center, uh eleven hundred center. Uh so they start with a uh name for the, you know, theme name for the uh development and then list their individual tenants. Obviously, the larger would be the main anchor, if you will, and then the smaller sign would go to uh the the smaller uh unit tenants. And then their address on the bottom. Um so as the code said, uh sixteen foot is the maximum allowable height. We're just asking for an additional foot and a half, uh probably eight inches. Eight inches of that is this architectural feature of this fabricated aluminum pole that projects above on the top of the sign to really help give it some balance and symmetry and and architectural appeal. Um as you saw in the staff report, we're you know, very pleased with the multiple different components, architectural features uh on that sign, including that rock gabion basket down along the base, which would be just behind the sidewalk a little bit within the property and located within a landscape area. Um as you uh ours zoning code also requires that there be some sort of uh base landscaping uh or landscaping at the base of uh of monuments to help soften the area, make it more appealing to pedestrians and obviously drivers. You provide some screening uh to the undercarriages and headlights of vehicles uh that might be in the parking lots. Uh this is um the site plan for the repaving of that parking lot. And I know the city's out there right now doing some sewer work and when they're done, uh fortunately, we're uh the applicant is already ready to repave. So um we fortunately uh will allow that applicant to take care of the paving for for the city after that work is complete. You see that proposed monument sign right there on center of the um main uh building or tenant location. And then uh at the uh in my discussions with the new owners and their willingness to repave and stripe the parking lot, we noticed there was a considerable additional area uh when you beyond what our minimum requirements for drive outs are. And in my discussions with them, we thought, well, this would be a great opportunity to introduce that landscaping that is part of the requirement for monument signage as well as overall just enhance and get rid of some of that asphalt right behind sidewalk. And again, try and soften up that curb appeal uh along the sixty uh Broad Street in this location. So they actually are proposing these three different man- uh landscape areas uh in lieu of what's now paving. Um so overall, should be a really nice improvement enhancement of property. Uh they haven't received approval of their overall comprehensive sign package uh excluding the monument because of this discussion tonight, your need for your approval. Uh but this is the sign that that package that has been approved. There's also a um eight uh T-Mobile existing and that sign's not going to change. But uh the applicant has taken this very clean, crisp uh black on white uh look to the elevations and their signage and uh I think it should go well with that proposed monument sign as an overall comprehensive sign package. Uh so again, staff uh recommended you and they approve uh or recommend you approve. And planning and zoning commission did unanimously recommend city council approval of this request. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Fernando, go ahead.
I just have one concern with that property. Um I I frequent it and I have my eye doctors there. Um but it is sometimes difficult to see the traffic when you're exiting the parking lot because some of the signage um is very close to the road, so it cuts off your angle. And it's not really evident from your your picture, but there is a curve that comes around there and sometimes they come around a little fast. So it's difficult to see. So if there's any consideration, if you guys take into consideration that that sign could be pulled away from the sidewalk enough that it would open up the line of sight for traffic.
Very good, Mayor, council member. Uh it looks like there is some room there to adjust, so I'll speak with them. But I do know um, yeah, I'll speak with them about pushing that back further. Uh it looks like we might have a couple feet of that. But I do know our hopefully our site triangle or our site visibility is is pretty um well-covered. Is it the north entrance or the south entrance that?
On the north side, there's a curve.
Right here.
Traffic's coming somewhere well, sometimes over fifty. And so they come on you really quick, especially when you're exiting that north exit. Um and then the the neighboring business has a sign that's right on the sidewalk as well, uh which makes it very difficult to see. So by the time you look one way, look the other way, um traffic's on you the other way again. So.
And mostly for the southbound traffic.
Yeah, if they don't, if they put a tree there, we're gonna have a big bushy tree, we're gonna have a lot of trouble with that line of sight there.
We have a requirement that it's either that there's a clear space within our site visibility triangles of from two feet from grade to eight feet. So it basically allows for a tree canopy to be up high enough or that two to eight feet, that six foot uh clear zone. So you can see exactly that oncoming vehicles. And we'll definitely review that further and speak with the uh applicant to see if uh uh they can push that sign back, which I think they can.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dana, do you know the speed limit right along there? Isn't it the thirty-five?
Yeah, it is thirty-five.
Supposed to be.
Yeah, so you know, and I know, I know that the Globe PD is working heavily on on enforcement and uh so hopefully we won't have too many of those people coming around that curve at fifty.
Same just right there by the evidence.
Okay. Where we have that sign, yeah. Okay.
And this is about another hundred yards past that.
That that curve that Ronaldo's talking about is pretty, there's a lot of traffic coming pretty hard through there all the time. Whether it's thirty-five or or not. But it's something to consider.
You have a question for Dana? Dana have a question also, the the light that's on the property, is that the owner's um a light or is that an ADOT light?
Uh the one with the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign on it?
No, the light, no, the light itself.
The the one in the sidewalk would be ADOT. Um that's definitely in the right of way. That other light appears, both of these two uh gooseneck or cobra heads here appear to be probably within the property. Right, right at the property line, possibly. Uh there has not been any mention of any change to those. Uh but given the property owner's improvements, I'm sure there would be some painting and cleanup uh like they're doing to the rest of the site.
So are we asking for this to be possibly brought back for action?
This is uh, oh yeah, this this is first read on it. Is there a, is there a?
Yeah, Dana, is there any desire to to waive the rule or to um expedite this or are we okay?
There's no rule. This is a general discretionary approval. It's not a CUP or zoning, no hearing, nothing. So you're welcome to take action this evening.
Yeah, it would be council's pleasure if you want to waive the rule, but but we're not, I I staff is not requesting it per se.
Mayor, I I would move to bring this to the next council meeting for further action.
Second.
In regards to, yeah, the north exit there.
Okay, the motion is to approve the recommendation of the planning zoning. Okay.
If they could also look to see if they can, whatever they can do to improve visibility, that would be appreciated.
Dana, did you catch that?
I did. We're gonna, we'll have a full review and discussion with them and present uh findings after your next meeting.
Here we have motion of second to move forward item five A to the next meeting. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Dana. Item five B, discussion and direction to staff to move forward with the advertisement for the invitation for bids C S dash two zero two two dash zero zero one zero for Upper Pinal Creek Bridge and roadway alternatives for the replacement of the Upper Pinal Creek Bridge number eight six zero three, known as Connie's Bridge, to be funded out of account number two one dash eight zero dash five two two zero one CIP Pinal Creek Bridge. Jerry.
Uh Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh round two. So uh the the first time we put this out for advertisement, uh we tried to include uh things in a different way. We've since separated those those items and uh there isn't any uh there isn't any uh ambiguous uh way of bidding it. And we also talked to all the contractors who did not bid it and find out, found out why. As we discussed earlier, I think at one of the earlier meetings, I think it was a council meeting we discussed with. But um but Rick and I are are pretty confident that we can uh go out to bid this time and get some interest. The only interest we had the last time was a a contractor from out of state who I don't even know if they looked at the job. They just threw a number out. So uh but we've talked to uh people down at APWA. We're going to the rural summit uh tomorrow. And uh we are um we are confident it's going to go this time. And uh we're we're hoping to get this bridge built. Uh hope to maybe construction sometime in January. So uh yeah, I don't have it done by January, but at least get it started. Any questions on this? It seems like we might have talked about it once before.
More than once.
The motion to direct staff to move forward with the advertisement for bid.
Motion of second for approval of item five B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jerry.
Good luck.
So at this time, I'm gonna go open open up the public hearing regarding the use of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG in the final project selection. So this is, the city is expected the city is expected to receive approximately one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-one federal CDBG funds from the Arizona Department of Housing Regional regional account, RACDBG funds must be used to benefit low-income persons and areas, alleviate slum and blight or address urgent needs. Based on citizen input as well as local and state planning objectives, several potential projects have been selected to be forwarded to the state of Arizona with a request for funding. It is expected that the city council will select the final project from the following potential CDBG products. Item or one, city sidewalks project and demo project to include Silver King and Rogue Buildings. Two, Veterans Park upgrades to include lighting sidewalks and Ramadas. Three, North Broad Street parking expansion to include the demo of the Silver King Building. So we'll turn it over to Andrea this time.
Andrea to start, yes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I first off, I'd like to start by apologizing for not being in person today. I think as some of you are aware, we are um preparing to host you guys uh this week at the Rural Transportation Summit. So we are already out here at the Harrah's um auction. We are excited to see you guys this week. And we have a full program ready for you guys coming, starting tomorrow. So I'd just like to start off and say that uh we're here today to select your CDBG project. I wanted to share just a little bit on the background of how we arrived today with your project list. Uh previously, the Veterans Park had been selected. And from what I understand, uh the city had received some additional funding for the playground equipment, which was purchased. And um I believe it has already been installed. So after discussions with the Department of Housing, they suggested that we come back to uh city staff and to council and go back to the drawing board for selection on a new project or the possible completion of some of the items within the park. So at this time, um I'd like to introduce Lorinda Aloita and she's going to continue this part of the public hearing process. She'll um talk about the projects that you guys moved forward from the last meeting so that you can uh pick your project today and we can begin uh moving forward with your process to um get your CDBG project going. So I'm gonna turn it over to her and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the public. My name is Lorinda Aloita and I'm re- I'm representing Central Arizona Governments regarding the twenty twenty-one CDBG grant cycle. At the first hearing that was held on July twelve, we reviewed the basic parameters of the CDBG requirements for this project and the process for their selection. At that meeting, you produced suggestions of projects to choose from. And today we are here for you to select your project for the allocation. I do need to mention that the city does have a grievance procedure in place and can contact the city manager with questions. Anyone needing technical assistance regarding the proposed projects or any information or facility access assistance can call myself at four eight zero four seven four ninety-three hundred. The city of Globe is expected to receive an estimated amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars in CDBG funds for FY twenty twenty-one. The city council proposed the following projects. ADA sidewalk project, building demo project to include Silver King and Rogue Buildings, and the Veterans Park upgrades to include lighting sidewalks and Ramadas. Only projects identified and listed at the previous public hearing are eligible to be considered at this hearing tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions?
We're just looking, we're just looking at the two options.
There, Mr. Mayor, members of council, on on the third option, I I there is a third option on there about the the demolition. Um we did not have uh hard prices. I I passed out to you uh some cost estimates of what the Veterans Park would supply in the way of the the items to do those improvements. Also, we passed out with the part um upgrades on the the sidewalks downtown and we and and what those would cost in that. We don't have any hard estimates to share with option three, the demolition uh for because it's such, it's a moving target. Uh we had engineers look at the demolition of Silver Silver King and its connection to the neighboring building. And and so it gets very convoluted there. Plus, there's there's an option that's in the works where it may not require the demolition spec uh may, scope may change. And and so it it was brought up, but it would be really hard right now to nail down a a a cost on that. And so I did not supply council with a a cost assessment on on the third. But we have John Angulo, Public Works Director, here to talk about um, like to go over kind of what would it be included in the Veterans Park and what will the sidewalk would look like. And so if council doesn't have any more, doesn't have any additional questions, I'd I'd like to invite uh John to review a little bit each of the uh the two remaining projects.
Could you just kind of hear with Central Arizona Governments? Um I'm looking at the agenda and the way Lorinda just read off the three subjects that we are going to be picking was correct, but on your agenda, it is not reading that way. Um so I don't want there to be confusion between what the council members are seeing. Um, so I don't want there to be confusion between what the council members are seeing on their agenda and what Lorenda just now read off.
Would you like us, Ken Hey, would you like us to read directly what is on the agenda for the ninth meeting?
I guess, actually what I'm saying is what's on the agenda incorrect on the what it reads. Um, only because.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
That number one combines the first option and the third option. That's not a number two. No.
Um. Okay. And then the third project is just the Silver King Building. Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page that that's, the council members weren't reading off the agenda and what Lorenda was telling you. That's okay, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
So, so we understand that item one is sidewalk project only.
Correct.
Item two is veterans park only.
Upgrades only, yes.
Only. And item three is the demo of the Silver Queen, um, project only. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't have figures.
We're, we're not including the road.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, just for clarification, just in for, uh, public. When we speak of, uh, sidewalk project, it's basically generally all of Broad Street, you know, from one end to the other. Uh, Jerry reached out, we actually contracted Rick Engineering to do a study of our downtown area. Um, this dollar amount that we're talking about, um, after doing some of the preliminary study, right now they're still in the process of doing all of downtown, uh, they've come out, done three site visits with our staff and Jerry's staff and, and coming up with some, trying to come up with some better dollar amounts. Uh, initially, the most, the most recent was, uh, on Broad Street from Sycamore, um, to, uh, Sycamore to Oak Street. Uh, that dollar amount would only cover one side of Broad Street and it would be from that section. So when we're talking about downtown, you know, sidewalk upgrades, that would be just that block, that one side. Uh, you know, bringing that up to code. So we know we have a, you know, we've been working on this, we have in other areas budgeted some other money also. Um, but we're talking citywide. For the C D B G funding, it's basically, that's kind of, doesn't have to be that area. This is for consideration, of course, for your, for your decision, uh, but that's kind of just an estimated view of how much area we're talking about coverage. Uh, where when we're talking about city hall upgrades, uh, the lighting, uh, that's in, on this part of this agenda, but actually the lighting's already, as you see, it's already in process. That's already has, has moved forward from the, uh, past budget coming into this budget and, uh, current update, uh, they'll be setting some posts on Friday and doing some, uh, trenching tomorrow. That lighting upgrade, which is already budgeted and in the process, in procure, already have been procured, is gonna be the, the dual heads lights, some accent lighting, some pedestal lighting around the park. And then it's also gonna include some, uh, power outlets, some pedestal lighting, so for future events such as the mayor's, you know, city address, uh, where we can have vendors where we've had, you know, just like the Old Dominion Parking Lot, there's gonna be pedestals, there's gonna be amps and you can plug into that where you can, some of our events, you see extension cords all over. We know it's a safety hazard and concern, so that's why we're incorporating that. So all that's what's currently going on right now. Uh, the additional benefits of having this type of funding available to the city to finish the veterans park would be when we're talking, you've all heard it, I've heard it even in the process of getting our equipment, shade structures. You know, um, uh, we would like to possibly use some of this funding when we're talking about, uh, finishing city hall. First of all, after our lighting, uh, we're gonna do the concrete. Uh, we've reached out, got some design work, as we've all known, we've had some, uh, water, uh, issues, some drainage issues and that would be, worked out and engineered, uh, so we can redo all the concrete. And that process as well, we'd actually like to, uh, add another ramada and meet all ADA requirements. As you know, when you're coming up, there's only really one side of city hall that's ADA compliant and friendly. Uh, we'd like to meet the standards as far as reconstruction and that's actually a requirement when we're, you know, rebuilding and reconstructing. Uh, there's just some drainage issues, we'd like to address all those now. Uh, but that's where all the concrete work and additional ramada and this would include some benches. And, uh, you see as we've removed some of the old concrete benches in the process of the remodel, we'd actually like to bring some benches and add some in more family friendly, friendly areas that don't take up as much space as the concrete where we can actually add more amenities to the area surrounding it.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, so John, what you're saying is this hundred and seventy thousand plus that we're, we're talking about, that would be enough to do those projects?
It would be enough, uh, the, the, my biggest current concern right now is, is getting the concrete, the design and the concrete work out of the way. That's gonna be a big part of it. Um, it would be per, you know, mayor and council's decision of, we've, I've got some current pricing for the shade structures. Um, just as of yesterday, I received some, so that's the most current we could get. Of course, it can be, you know, it can change, but the installation cost, uh, then, you know, is really a lot more, but it has to be just like their equipment has to be, uh, professionally installed. Uh, but, uh, that would actually include the shade structures over the two existing playground equipment and then I've got a separate price for the swings. Uh, but those alone are almost a hundred thousand dollars between the three. You know, so it, it could include what, you know, if, uh, if the funding's there so we can utilize for that, uh, then it would be per, you know, your decisions to which areas we want to cover, but it would, it would come fairly close. We do have additional funding in our budget for some concrete work. So there, there's this funding and then we would hope to finish up some of the other amenities that are on the park area.
We've already got money, uh, designated for, for the lighting, for the light, lighting?
Yes. Yeah, the lighting.
I think that's probably the most critical right now with, with the amount of people there.
Yes, we, yeah, we were actually, we, we were really lucky that the light towers were accessible, that were in our possession. Uh, with, uh, you know, other funding, uh, we've had, we had them on site and we found the most perfect use for them, uh, until, so making sure the public's safe. So we've been utilizing them as much as we can, so, um, we're hoping to have them, the, the lighting project actually done within the next two weeks.
There's some more questions for John?
John, I have a couple of questions. Um, this is for, uh, Lorenda. Um, we were supposed to receive a hundred and seventy nine thousand. What is the amount of administration cost? Cause we don't get that full amount, we still have to pay the administrative fees. So what's the total amount that we would get from this grant?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that. Um, once your fund, once we, um, select the project, then we will go into, um, we will submit for your application and we will work with the city to negotiate a contract. Right now, um, contracts are typically anywhere between, uh, ten and fourteen percent for admin. So we will work with your city staff and, um, if you'd like, we'll make sure to keep you involved in that process.
We're looking maybe somewhere around maybe a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand that we would actually receive. And then I see on John's, uh, veterans park upgrade is, these are twelve months old, so these prices could be substantially higher than what they're on there.
The, uh, mayor, the, the concrete work actually was actually, originally was around thirty-three thousand. Going into the budget cycle, I kind of increased that to have a little bit flexibility. Um, so that, that price is really only on the concrete. All the other pricing is actually as of yesterday for the playground, the, the shade structures and everything else, and of course the lighting's already in process, so that will be, you know, that would already be worked in. So the shade structures is actually probably one of the biggest. And the, the benches is probably maybe two weeks old on pricing, uh, additional benches and, and stuff. So everything's really current other than the concrete, which that will fluctuate just with asphalt and gas prices.
So that total amount is a hundred, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do that at this time for veterans park?
Yes, right.
And then what you said about the sidewalk project, you're saying that that amount of money would only cover one block on one side to, to, of, for a project?
Yes. Um, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, uh, Andrea, just a, a quick question. Let's say the, this pricing holds and there's a gap between what we list here and, and administrative fees. We can, you know, maybe add in, uh, a couple more, uh, picnic benches and, and amenities as long as they fall under the veterans park upgrade. We can expand, we can expand the scope to make, scope to make sure that our, our project comes out and, and uses the majority, almost all the money?
I'm gonna defer to, um, Ken Hebert on that, uh, Mr. Mayor and Paul, but I believe if you pick one project, the funding has to stay within that one project.
Right, but it would just be.
Yeah, so if you're doing the veterans, yes, you could.
Maybe instead of one ramada, two ramadas, maybe three sun shades rather than two. We can increase the, the capacity of the things that have been approved.
Yes, this is Ken Hebert with, with KAG. Um, yes, we will definitely build to do that. Um, I do need to forewarn you and I'll work closely with you before we start this project. We can't be co-mingling, um, other parts of the project that are gonna be paid for with this project because it will co-mingle C D B G to, I mean, it'll make Davis Bacon wages go onto your part of the project, so we need to keep everything kind of separate. If you have ongoing stuff going on right now, it needs to be finished and the stuff that we're, we're doing with this money be outright C D B G project.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, John, I believe the electrical will be finished by the time we get to the install for this.
Yes, yeah, the, the lighting projects hopefully will be done within the next two weeks. So at that point, we'll just kind of wait for further direction or.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we will work very closely with KAG to make sure, I mean, these are, these are very strict rules, it's federal funds and, and make sure that, that we, um, uh, before we do anything that, that we're, uh, within the parameters of the use of the money.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so just, just so I'm clear, based on your schedule or this schedule and, and, uh, Kenneth's comments, the only item that would be considered co-mingling would be the lighting and power upgrades. Everything else would be outside of that, correct?
We, and, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I, I believe if we were to approve this, we would not approve any lighting or power upgrades. We would, we would modify this to say up, upgrades including concrete, ADA design, shade structures, ramadas, uh, tables and landscaping. And so, no, we would, we would exclude the, the lighting from, um, from this request. And we would ask for no additional lighting money, so we don't co-mingle.
There wouldn't even be any language.
Right, correct.
Okay, well then that, I think that satisfies, uh, Candace, does that satisfy your concern?
It would, we just need to keep the projects separate. Um, other words, the Davis Bacon requirements would bleed over into your other project and then make the costs go up.
Fernando?
My beautiful connect is gonna stay there, right?
Sorry. It's going.
No, we're gonna move it to the library.
Yeah, councilman, we're hoping to move that next week. Hopefully we have this scheduled, the power's been disconnected, uh, so we're making arrangements to finally have that moved.
We are gonna have an event here though where you will be photographed with it there and then with it on. You know, what, what's different between these two pictures?
We're going after.
And if I may add, council, uh, just on consideration, when we talk about downtown, uh, Broad, I mean, we talked about sidewalks all over globally, no highway, downtown residents, uh, that's a bigger plan, of course, we have to approach. But also, looking at the downtown area, uh, there's some things that, once we get the final design work, we're also talking about, when we talk about what we did on, in our preliminary meetings, when we talk about the lighting projects and everything. So my concern is make sure we addressed all the drainage, we address our, our lighting plan. Uh, you know, so we start doing sidewalks, I don't wanna cut a new sidewalk a month after we just installed it because not all the wiring's in place.
If each one of them, you do everything that needs to be done.
Yes, councilman.
Any other questions? Any comments or, or maybe your?
A, as we go into our strategic planning sessions and our subcommittee sessions for the year, I, I just propose there should be another box we can check. If we're willing to go after another project in next year's cycles or C D B G, that we earmarked in our discussion. Because I know when this first came up, we were all kind of, we have to make a decision tonight? Kind of attitude with first presentation. So the way to get around that is to put and insert discussions of the possibility of a project being funded by C D B G. Not meaning we're going after it, but here's the subject, we need to check that box. And then take the list at whatever appropriate time and look at it in our subcommittee meetings to determine, oh, this one needs to go to C D B G because it's a possibility for that, for the project. So to avoid the consternation or surprise we had at that moment in time is what I recommend, Paul, you include that in our discussions at either subcommittees or in strategic planning sessions. So there's always a box there that we can fill with C D B G possible project.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Gonzalez, uh, excellent point. I, I think that there are certain projects that are standalone, one up, about in the pri, the right price range, uh, that, that we could in, in that process go, you know, that, that actually looks like something that would be a, a good one, you know, one chunk, you know, community development block grant project and, and put that on the, uh, uh, on the table in the notes. So when we do get to this process, we can just go back and look at our, our discussions and say, okay, that's, we, we found two or three that, that fit the criteria. Um, and, and then bring them up in addition to whatever else council may have, have, uh, you know, brought to our attention.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and just give my thoughts out loud is, you know, I, I, I've gone back and forth with this, uh, you know, I was, I wanted to see our park completed and upgraded, uh, because it's a project we started, then I went to sidewalks, cause I started thinking of some other things. Uh, but after hearing the presentation even today and, and all we're gonna cover is one block, we're working towards the quality of life for our residents and the amount of traffic that we're seeing in our veterans, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm more supportive of completing our park here and, and, and at veterans park. And that's just my opinion, but, uh, I, after looking again and hearing this whole presentation, we can really make a big difference here. These ramadas and all this other stuff will be amazing to see this in this area.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, absolutely, like I say, this is a, this is a council, um, a council decision. Um, before we, before we wrap up here though, I, I did want to take a moment to thank, uh, Andrea and, and KAG for their help. Um, it, it, on the initial, initial run of the, the meetings with this, we were excited about this park and we, we still had the squeaky swing, squeaky, squeaky swing going on outside. Uh, if you remember that, we haven't heard that for a while. Um, and, uh, you know, and so, so we were trying to, to beat the supply chain issues and, and combines and projects. Um, you know, it, when, when we found out that, that we had missed some, some qualifications on the procurement, uh, went to, uh, KAG and tried to figure out, could we rescue the process we had? And we looked at swapping out some other projects and looking at some other ways we could rescue what was already on that list and, and Andrea advised us after consulting with Arizona Department of Housing, the best way to redo this is to start over, uh, from the, the original hearing again and then this hearing. But, but the, the, the good news is, we did get the playground equipment into city hall, into the veterans park early and here and at community center and it's been wildly used and very popular this whole summer and, and so, uh, the good news is we, we, we got our park equipment and then the first phase in, this'll wrap up the second phase and finish this off. The, also on the sidewalks and we have a plan for downtown, uh, develop, development but improvement. So one of the main priorities, one of the top three priorities of this council is, is our downtown district in many aspects, from parking, sidewalks, um, um, the warehouse tax or not warehouse tax, but the warehouse, uh, way of, of looking at warehouse properties and, um, and everything that we had planned, the lighting and improvements. We're, we're gonna come back with a, a combined master group of, of recommendations. We're going to come back with a combined master group of recommendations and we can fit those in. And then when we get to there, we may be ready to pluck one of them out for the next round of community development block grant. But it'll give us time to get those ducks in a row and that is definitely on our agenda because of council's desire to see improvements downtown.
Do you have one more question for John? The Ramada, if it was to go through, if this council votes on it, where would the... When you say a Ramada, is that on this area out here or... The Ramada that we got actually priced was kind of something similar to what's out here, but actually would be on this front area. There's a path that's there. That would be renewed in our concrete, redoing the concrete. That originally was set up kind of for the ADA. There was a bench out there and that's what kind of met that. I've got some additional pricing for this area because I thought we truly never utilized this site as much as we could, especially with Farmer's Market now being so popular on the side. So I think there's an opportunity there, but the Ramada that's listed in this was actually for that area so we can meet off that requirement from the entranceway, so. And that would be nice. Some of the comments I heard from residents is they're here to watch their kids, but there's no shade area for them to actually sit there and watch their kids. So that would be an amazing upgrade to that, for these parents to be able to sit there and watch their kids. Yes, and one of the things in considering a lot of the, when we walk with the vendor, just looking at different spots, is putting benches closer to the playground equipment where you can sit on the edge. We go to a lot of these parks now, it's right at the edge of the equipment. You know, right now, you see parents all the way up this Ramada and trying to peek around the corner if their kid's in the playground equipment. Any other questions for John before we close the hearing? It goes up to an accident. Okay, John, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing with the recommendation to corrections on the list that we have on our agenda so we can, for the record. And then just want to remind everybody that's here, if you could please sign the sign-in sheet so we put you down as being part of this public hearing today also.
I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
This being a public meeting, do we have to afford the public the opportunity to comment?
I think Mayor has offered, but yes, if there is any members of the public that at this point wanted to speak on this before we close the public hearing, you're welcome to step up to the podium. And we should check, we have anything on text or in our emails? Take a quick look. And Danny, can you see if there's anything in the email? I might open it now. Just, no, just the community development block grant application and the projects, it would be the discussion.
No emails are here?
And...
If there's no...
I got to close the meeting first, yeah. Yeah, I don't see anything here.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Andrea, thank you and your staff for being on Zoom. I know you guys are extremely busy down at Maricopa getting the conference ready and everything, but we appreciate you being here on Zoom live with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to join via Zoom.
Okay, so we'll go to action items now. And item 7A is consideration of staff update for the fiscal year 2022 community block grant, CDBG process and approval of a final project.
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, I believe everything that I intended to and wanted to say and Andrea said has been said during the public hearing. But now it'd be council, any further debate or recommendation for a project? And...
Mr. Mayor, I would make the recommendation that we accept option one of the CDBG grant process not to include the lighting and power upgrades.
That option one and option two, that's on Veterans Park is number two.
Option one.
Well, I got my numbering backwards, so I would go with the option based on the agenda, which would be option two on the agenda. My apologies for getting mine backwards numbered.
Okay.
Yeah. So option...
So I would make a recommendation that we approve option two being the Veterans Park upgrades without the lighting and power upgrades included.
We have motion and a second for approval of project number two, which is Veterans Park upgrades. Do we have any further discussion? Go ahead, Freddie.
Charlie, I don't know if this really matters, but since it is on the agenda, I would do a correction on item two, veterans. It says, veterans? Veterans Park, it should be Veterans Park. Just so we have the language accurate. I don't know who bender eyes.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Any abstaining, motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
Good job, John.
Andrea, thank you so much for you and your team. And we will, all community development block grants will go through you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
We'll see you tomorrow. Drive safe.
Do we have any late agenda items?
No. Well, we, one e-session that we added on there. And that's in the e-session and that...
Second call to the public, do we have anybody online or on phone for any comments?
If you want to do, this would be a chance to do a call to the public if you wanted to speak about any item. Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I think we do have a late call to the public. So we, and we can't respond, but you can go up and...
My name is Mike, Mike Laporte, Summit West Science. I live in the Valley of East Mesa. I am the contractor for the sign that you considered earlier, and I have particular interest in your safety concerns. You said that you cannot respond, so I don't know if we can reopen this particular topic, but...
And I would say that you're welcome to speak on any aspect of that. Can we go back and revisit?
I wish I would have known that he...
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
I would have brought him up for that.
Yeah, well, and so you can say what you would like to share with council. They can't go back and forth with questions.
That's fine.
But I do know that we'll have another chance in two weeks to talk about this and you can either appear or Zoom in and we can take that.
While I cannot speak for Dana, I think he is correct in saying and suggesting that the ownership is, would be willing to reconsider the position of that sign in relation to traffic and pedestrian safety with regard to visibility and the positioning of that sign to the roadway. I don't have specific measurements as to what the safety space or the triangle is for the either end of the driveway, but I know that the proposed placement provides us a little additional space to move the sign closer to the building side. In respect to what you specifically mentioned relating to being able to see around the corner, I too notice, I've driven through Globe many times just the last few weeks, I know that PD has got a flashing sign to slow traffic down. Regardless of that, I also know that traffic is moving quite quickly and that's always a hazard. That fact actually was part of the inspiration of having the sign, especially at the bottom, open so that you could see at least walking traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists and otherwise. Making the sign more narrow probably is not as feasible to, again, to expand that view. But any other ideas that are brought forth in my continued communications with ownership and with Dana to try and make this as good an opportunity as possible for everyone will certainly do that. My team and I will work together with everyone and can field questions at any time. All righty? You betcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you can stay about five, 10 minutes until we, I'll touch base with you.
Scheduling the meetings?
Nothing, Mayor.
Future agenda items that need to be brought up? Anybody have any? Fernando?
I know that we, here at the league, they did pay attention quite a bit to water this year because of the Colorado River allocations.
The 27th.
But I know that at one time, we had a committee that was just dedicated to water and it's not been active for a while, I don't believe. But we really should be looking at what we can do to reserve our water usage and save it for what we need it for in the future. So I just feel like maybe it's time for us to reengage with that to figure out what could be done.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, Councilman Shipley, this has been on our list. We've had a pre-meeting and we're going to have another pre-meeting with Victoria Hermosia, okay, who has been around for almost two years working with U of A. We had a pre-call with her and I think there are six actual areas that we're going to present that we can make a difference in. You know, and I don't want to steal the thunder, but it was very much a comprehensive approach and it was very much a Globe-centric applied to what we can do. The big issue that we found out in the valley in Glendale and talking with her, we are not relying on CAP water. The Colorado River has been allocated and it's been, it's, the allocations have drained it. The allocations were too high. If everybody pulled the allocation, you've got water coming in, you've got water coming out. It hurts many of the farmers and the people who are dependent upon that. We are not, but if there's a water shortage around us, there's a water impact to us. And there's some things that we should be doing anyway. And so we will go from the basics to some of the more comprehensive and more, you know, just really creative ways that we can work on making sure we have that water supply. We are going to meet with, and just I don't want to, staff and have at the next LIPA meeting where all our water people are there, meet together to make sure that what she is recommending and what we know and can do, we're on board with staff on these areas that we're going to work on. But it will be, I think, going to be exciting actually, presentation from her and some thought-provoking stuff from us about where we need to go. So this is the, finally, the presentation I've been hoping to get to you. We may bring other people in, but this is a great place to start. And that'll be on the 27th? Yes.
And Paul and Fernando, I know that Freddie and I have been part of the U of A water study that's been going on for years and their funding has ended. So they went to the county to try and get somebody to continue to push this project through because it's important, but I don't know if it's something that we should do as a city also just to evaluate our water supply, you know, where do we stand? You know, I know we split water within our city with Arizona Water and then we get ours from San Carlos, the Aquifer. So I don't know if it's something with the city or do they have funding to continue their study? Because I know we're not including, you say a Globe and our Aquifer is not included in the U of A water study at this point.
And I will tell you, this will not be the last meeting we have on water. I think each one of these topics is going to be, you know, something that we'll be working on. But City of Globe historically and this council specifically is a regional solutions and we will look for those opportunities to work. The water doesn't know boundaries.